Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:00 P.M. I would like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Patrowski, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Mattson?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. The invocation this evening will be offered by Councilman Westburg Majors.
Thank you. Can we just take a moment of silence right now for the Pitts family? All of those that are dealing with the impacts of continued with COVID and violence in our community. Also, we also want to make sure that we are lifting up all of the residents of Ukraine during these very difficult times. We just want to continue to pray for their courage and freedom through this crisis. Please, Bowers, head to the moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Asha Green.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Green. This evening for communications, we are joined by the Harrisburg Downtown Improvement District to share a little bit of information about the upcoming St. Patrick's Day parade.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Todd Vingeter-Witty, the Executive Director for the Harrisburg Downtown Improvement District, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the upcoming St. Patrick's Day parade. This year it's going to be March 19th, a week from Saturday. The parade is at 2:00 in the afternoon. We're going to kick things off that day with the Lucky Charm Race, which is going to be a four-mile race, which starts right at noon. It starts and finishes right at the parade stage, which will be right out here in front of the City Building Center. So as I mentioned, the parade starts at 2:00. We're going to use the same route as we did for the holiday parade back in November. So groups will gather at the stage on City Island and Market Street Bridge. Come across the bridge and really the parade will kick off right at Front Market, turn left on Second Street, go down Second Street to North Street, turn left, and then Front Street, turn left, and then end up on the island again. We have about, gosh, right now, over 60 groups signed up. We have a lot of Irish bands, in fact, 10 of them, that will be performing. We have many dance groups, and of course, the kids' favorite, water trucks are all going to be there too. So we're really looking forward to welcoming everybody downtown. Looking for a great, great day in downtown Harrisburg.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here and sharing about the parade. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open the floor for courtesy of the floor. Is anyone to my right that would like to offer public comment? If you could please come to the mic. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Ayesha Mason. My address is 331 Winter Drive, over D1. Do you hear me?
Yes. Whoop it, maybe pull it down a little bit.
Like this?
Yes.
Okay. So recently, um, so recently on, well, February 28th, I was denied zoning to my future daycare on 2810 Green Street by Matt Bianca. And when the deny was given, I asked if I was denied. He disclosed the denial and also he did disclose the residency of his business that's which is behind my building. So this, the residency will be on 28, I mean, will be on Second Street, I'm sorry. I'm not too sure of the address, but it's on Second Street. And during the meeting, everything he was questioning me about was pertaining to the state and not zoning. And I feel like the meeting was unfair between him and I the whole time. And I'm just asking, like, for, I'm not too sure. I don't know what, how to say it, but I don't want to say, like, um, to be removed, but just another try for me to appeal the zoning if possible. I'm not without Matt Bianca in charge for this meeting.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind standing a few minutes after the meeting, Councilman Majors and I can speak to you about some possible next steps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. Laura Harding, 2246 North Third Street. The only thing I would like to address tonight is the resolution for Daywood Engineering. It came to my attention today that there were some highly qualified applicants for the city engineer position, and they were members of our community, residents of our city, and professional engineering licensed. And they, I was told that they were not called in for an interview. So if we have highly qualified applicants who are members of our own community, why are we entertaining the possibility of a contract with Daywood? That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Anyone in the middle that would like to offer a public comment? Anyone to my left that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing here and none, we will move forward to the next item on our agenda. Approval of minutes for the legislative session of February 15, 2022. Councilmembers, are there any revisions to the minutes?
Just one question with respect to under-resolutions. I just note that throughout the document, when we are referring to how, what the, excuse me, how everything was resolved, whether a bill went to continue or a vote was passed, it was involved. And just under the two resolutions, it was involved under the President's actions. So just for continuity purposes, to make sure that those two lines would be for resolution eight and resolution 12, that the disposition is highlighted. That's it.
Are there any other revisions to the February 15 meeting minutes? Hearing none, we will entertain the revision from Councilman Majors. The minutes will stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. I will offer the first report on the work session of March 1st, 2022. On Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, the Administration Committee met to discuss Resolutions 7 of 2022 and Bill 1 of 2022. Resolution 7 of 2022 is a resolution amending the rules of council for the Harrisburg City Council. I reminded residents that the rules of council can be found on the city's website by visiting the Office of City Council's page and scrolling all the way to the bottom for their reference and review. Next, I read the titles, subsections, and revisions that were made to the 21 rules. Changes included Rule Number 9, courtesy of the floor, the establishment of written guidelines for the presentation of public comment, Rule Number 15, Committees, Subsection C, the Building and Housing Committee, the zoning hearing board is under their purview, Subsection D, Community and Economic Development, and the last sentence and monitoring of comprehensive plan matters, Subsection F, Public Safety, the last sentence and matters concerning community service aides and the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. Rule Number 21 references special accommodations. It's a new rule that was added to improve accessibility for all residents by including a sign language interpreter during legislative session meetings and a Spanish language interpreter during legislative and work sessions of Harrisburg City Council. Councilmembers asked questions regarding Rule Number 15, Subsection B, Budget and Finance Committee, reference to water sewer rates and fees, and an amendment was offered to Rule Number 21. Councilmembers also discussed the need for providing committee reports. Members shared that the committee reports are helpful if someone missed the recording of the work session. The committee reports add to the public meeting record, and the committee reports are summaries that are shared the same day the vote occurs, sharing that councilmembers are making factual decisions. Finally, public comment guidelines were reviewed, sharing the methods in which members of the public can participate in the meetings. Members of the public can provide written commentary via postal mail. They can share concerns by phone, email, or in person. Bill 1 of 2022 is an ordinance amending Chapter 1-101.1, Council, and 1-302 Glossary of Terms of Title 1 Legislative Code and Chapter 2-501 Boards, Commissions, and Authorities of Title 2 Administrative Code to provide the authorization for virtual public meetings, virtual access for participants of certain public meetings, and to provide for manner and time of the publishing of agendas for public meetings. Mr. Neil Grover, City Solicitor, provided an overview of the bill. Mr. Grover shared that the bill came from the realities of the COVID-19 pandemic and virtual public meetings that were temporarily allowed under state law. He noted that there are limits to what a council can do in terms of virtual appearance under the Third Class City Code. However, there is nothing that provides for public participation virtually, including but not limited to public comment and virtual testifiers or meeting participants. The City Code was amended to make accommodations, and changes were reviewed. Such changes include posting of meeting agendas 24 hours in advance, determining who can attend and under what circumstances, technical needs, glossary of terms update, and city authorized equipment. Mr. Steve Wortner, Director of Information Technology, discussed the technical needs. Mr. Wortner shared that an initial estimate of equipment could range from $4,000 to $5,000 for a small conference room. He mentioned that design and scope work would be needed. Additional equipment needed may include laptops, multiple monitors, and audio equipment. Councilmembers asked questions regarding equipment, staff capacity, Zoom chat features, Zoom license fees, use of current equipment, Wi-Fi speed, upgraded video system, funding sources, and effective date, emergency meetings, and hybrid meetings. Mr. Wortner shared that the Zoom platform has added new features for hybrid meetings that could assist in implementing the provisions of the bill. I would encourage my colleagues to support Resolution 7 of 2022 and Bill 1 of 2022. Resolution 7 of 2022 confirms the council rules, while Bill 1 of 2022 provides for virtual participation for members of the public. This concludes the report of the Administration Committee. Next, we will hear the report from Chair Daniels on the work session of March 1st, 2022. Chair Daniels?
Thank you. On March 1st, the Community and Economic Development Committee reviewed the land development application from S.J.L. Rentals LLC for a plan to renovate the property located at 1402 North Third Street into five-unit multifamily dwelling with a commercial space on the first floor. One of the requirements that was waived in this application was a space requirement for the units, for the residential unit portion of the building. It seemed that the applicant met all of the requirements in his application, and I think that's it. Based on the information that was provided, I would recommend a yes vote for the applicant.
Thank you, Chair Daniels. Next, we will hear a report from Chair Green on the work session of March 1st, 2022. Chair Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. During the work session of March 1st, 2022, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed Resolutions 10 of 2022, a resolution ratifying the collection agreement between the City of Harrisburg and the Harrisburg School District for the collection of business privilege and mercantile tax and the amusement tax for the 2022 tax year. This agreement is something that the city and the school district has had and renewed since 2001 annually. There were no questions from councilmembers regarding this resolution during their work session, and I'm asking that my colleagues vote to support this resolution. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Green. Next, we will hear the report from Chair Mattson on the work session of March 1st, 2022. Chair Mattson?
Thank you, President Bowers. On the work session of March 1st, the Public Works Committee discussed Resolution 6 of 2022 and Resolution 12 of 2022. Resolution 6 was a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Dawood Engineering, Inc. to provide general engineering and survey services for non-transportation projects on as-needed basis. Then Resolution 12 was a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an addendum to a professional services agreement with Dawood Engineering for that firm to provide services as the city engineer. Because of the overlap of both resolutions, the committee discussed them jointly. Solicitor Gaylor gave an overview of the resolutions and explained that over the years, the Engineering Department had been contracting out work and had already awarded a lot of work to Dawood, but with the vacancy of the city engineer's office, it would make sense to contract with Dawood to provide services until a new city engineer could be identified. Council then asked questions of note, council asked questions around MWEB complement in Dawood's workforce, costs associated with the scale of the work, and concerns that we're not having a full-time city engineer. Through the discussion, it became clear that the language in Resolution 12 would need to be amended, and Resolution 6 would be tabled for further discussion. Resolution 12 will be discussed tonight during an open session, and it will go over the amendment. That concludes my report for the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Chair Mattson. Next, we have ordinances for first reading. We have nine this evening. Ordinance for amendments, we have nine. We have one ordinance for final passage. Mr. Patrowski, could you please read Bill 1 of 2022 into the record?
Bill 1 of 2022 is an ordinance amending Chapter 1-101.1, Council, and 1-302 Glossary of Terms of Title 1 Legislative Code and Chapter 2-501 Boards, Commissions, and Authorities of Title 2 Administrative Code to provide the authorization for virtual public meetings, virtual access for participants of certain public meetings, and to provide for manner and time of the publishing of agendas for public meetings.
Thank you. This time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. I would ask that Mr. Wortner please join us. You have some updates relative to this bill. Thank you. I know following our meeting, Councilman Majors made an inquiry relative to the timeline, the implementation of the provisions in the bill, and during the meeting, we asked about an effective date. So if you could please provide some updates of the information that you shared with us for the public's reference.
Good evening. Steve Wortner, IT Director. Since the last meeting, we did some more research, and a lot of things we said still need to be done, resources, hardware, software, some network connectivity in here, and an extensive amount of testing to make sure everything works correctly. So what we'd like to do is come back in mid-June with a report of projected costs, budget reapplication, and then implement January 1st, 2023.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wortner?
Yes.
Councilman Majors?
Thank you for that. So I just want to be clear. The way that the legislation is written now, because our solicitor, Chair Isaac, the language right now is a May provision, right? So should we pass this? It gives us the authority to allow for virtual public meetings. Not necessarily a requirement to do so. I think one of the concerns is, you know, should we, if this passes, there's going to be a public expectation that at our next, you know, meeting after it gets signed and goes through the normal process, which takes about, you know, 10 to 20 days through, that we would then start our meeting. So putting in an effective date of January 1, 2023, I mean, puts it off, you know? But are we, even if it's with a May provision there, do we have to make that effective date to June 20, to January 1, 2023? Or can we leave it there, it stays as a May, and then we work with IT to try to expedite the timeline? I don't want to push it off until January. If you say January 1, 2023, that's, you know, putting off what we know we need to be done in a very expedited manner.
Yeah. Though ordinance as written, as you stated, is permissive. There's nothing in the ordinance requiring virtual public meetings the minute it goes into effect. So if the effective date stays as written, it would allow that implementation whenever the technical solutions were there. If the effective date is 1-1, 2023, we would not have the authorization for those public meetings before that date.
Okay. And then to Mr. Wortner, in terms of being able to put together a package, you know, I think of, are you able to speed up the process on putting together what is needed? So we're not waiting until, you know, to get a reallocation. We've done reallocations now throughout the year. I think the earlier we get your information with a projected timeline, as a council and to our community, we can try to get the systems up and running as soon as possible. Because I don't want to push it off. I know we want to give our community more access, not pushing it off until, you know, January 23.
Yeah, we can work to expedite that timeline and get it to you as soon as we have it. Now that Mattson wore with his new communications director, I think we can work together to come up with a solution that meets the needs of the bill.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Wortner on Bill 1? Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying. I will entertain a motion to resume the legislative session.
So moved.
Very second? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Patrowski, if there don't no additional questions, comments on Bill 1 of 2022? Okay, hearing none, if you could please call the vote.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Bill 1 passes.
Thank you. We will now move to resolutions. Mr. Patrowski, could you please read Resolution 5, 2022 into the record?
Resolution 5 of 2022 is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development plan to convert the building located at 1402 North Third Street into a five-unit multifamily dwelling with a commercial space on the first floor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments relative to Resolution 5? I just have one comment. Given the discussion, I know the applicant referenced that he was supportive of the affordable housing legislative package. However, given the range of rent that he shared, I'm not confident that our residents would be able to afford to live in any of the five units. So as a result, I will be voting no. Please call the vote, Mr. Patrowski.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
I had one comment before reading an interview that S.J.L. Rentals did within the verb. He had stated, and Mr. Leder had stated, that he was going to be creating a five-apartment dwelling, five-market rate apartment. So I will be voting no, because I do believe that every citizen in Harrisburg should be able to afford any apartment within our city and should be given the ability and opportunity to do so. So my vote will be no. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Bowers?
No.
Resolution 5 passes.
Thank you. Ms. Patrowski, could you please read Resolution 7 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 7 of 2022 is a resolution amending the rules of council for Harrisburg City Council.
Thank you. I only have one amendment?
Yes, I'd love to move to amend the resolution, the special accommodations portion as follows. Rule Number 21, to improve accessibility for all residents, a sign language interpreter will be present during legislative sessions of Harrisburg City Council. A Spanish language interpreter will be present during both legislative sessions and work sessions of Harrisburg City Council. All meeting notices should state that if a person with a disability needs any accommodations and participates in either the legislative sessions or work sessions, they should contact the city clerk prior to the meeting. This rule is not intended to prevent or cease any council session when an interpreter or interpretation service provider is unavailable or otherwise not in attendance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The amendment has been moved improperly second. Mr. Patrowski, could you please call the vote?
Calling the vote for the amendment to Resolution 7, Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Bowers?
Yes. Now, we will vote on Resolution 7 of 2022 as a amendment.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 7 has amended passes.
Thank you. Mr. Patrowski, could you please read Resolution 10 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 10 of 2022 is a resolution ratifying a collection agreement between the City of Harrisburg and Harrisburg School District for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and the amusement tax for the year for the 2022 tax year.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Resolution 10? Hearing none, Mr. Patrowski, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 10 passes.
Thank you. Mr. Patrowski, could you please read Resolution 12 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 12 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an addendum to a professional services agreement with Dawood Engineering Incorporated for that firm to provide services as the city engineer.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Chair Mattson?
Yes. Solicitor Gaylor, would you mind, you can make an overview of the amendment and resolution.
So at council's request, we prepared an amended resolution, an amended contract for Resolution 12, which has been provided to council. The proposed amendment has essentially the same terms and conditions as the addendum would have. It is still capped at $150,000.
It is still capped at $150,000. It still expires on December 31st. However, unlike the addendum, this is a standalone agreement that has all the necessary terms and conditions and does not require the concurrent passage of Resolution 6. So this provides that Dowdwood can provide those services until the end of the year, and then council can separately decide Resolution 6 at its discretion.
Okay. Good overview. Does anybody have anything to add? Does Dowdwood have anything they'd like to add or interest? Okay. Any questions from your colleagues? I'll leave it open.
I just had one, just to bring some clarity. So if Dowdwood is performing the engineering that we need within the city, two, one question is, and I believe we are, but are we still actively looking for a full-time city engineer? And if so, if we find one between now and before the year ends and the contract is out, what exactly does that look like?
So I would let the administration and the mayor's office answer the question of where they are on looking for a city engineer. With regards to this contract, there's a termination for convenience clause, and I think Dowdwood is aware that we're looking for a city engineer. So we would be able to end the contract at that point. I will say, we did contemplate on hiring a city engineer, and the contract contemplates a transition period where Dowdwood would work with the new city engineer who was brought in to get them up to speed on projects that they've been working on and provide assistance during that transition period.
Okay, so in other words, we wouldn't be paying to, like, a city engineer in Dowdwood? If we found one within the end of the year, we would then, if they know it would be terminated, but then they would stay on just to help them, you know?
Yeah, so I will say, there is nothing that requires the city to terminate a room in when they hire a city engineer, and this does authorize it for up to the full amount of $150,000. But it does allow the provisions of the contract to allow for early termination. And that was contemplated when we requested Dowdwood provide the proposal that, you know, they understood we were looking for a full-time city engineer, and that this part, this would not have two cooks in the kitchen.
Okay, yes. So put it now. Thank you. Okay, thank you. That brought me some clarity.
Anyone else? Mr. Majors?
Yes. So, and I thank you for the folks from Dowdwood for being here again. Understand why we're going to be moving forward and why we do need a city engineer and a PE scan. Just a little bit of clarification on the questions that I asked. We did get a response dated March 4th from Dowdwood regarding the questions I asked regarding their diversity. One of the things that I am, the question was specifically about Dowdwood Engineering, and the response that we received is a combination of Dowdwood and Cosmos Technologies. So Cosmos Technologies, so a couple of questions. What is the worked relationship between Cosmos Technologies and Dowdwood Engineering?
Cosmos Technology is a team member. They bring a certain skill sets that will help us perform duties for the city. They have certain expertise in stormwater management design, and they've done quite their work on a statewide basis in that regard. So we felt they would help strengthen our team in serving the city.
Okay. That still doesn't give me clarity on the question that was asked regarding the complement of Dowdwood Engineering. So what is your overall staffing complement at Dowdwood Engineering?
Dowdwood Engineering has approximately 145 employees, and at Cosmos, there's approximately 21. So the total combined is 166.
Okay. And then in terms of the female complement solely at Dowdwood Engineering, what is that number?
I believe it was 40.
Okay, and minority stat?
It was 25 in total, like?
Total was 25.
That total was a combination of Cosmos?
That's correct.
And Dowdwood, the question that was asked of, was asked, which is Dowdwood Engineering?
It was 10 from us.
10 from Dowdwood.
Okay. Thank you. And to me, I mean, again, these questions were pretty straightforward. It feels like you're trying to bump up your minority complement by including them. If they're going to be working with you as a partner, I understand, but the contract that we are negotiating with is specifically with Dowdwood Engineering. So just getting clarity on those things is helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Staying none, we'll just open this back up for a final vote on the amendment and then a final vote on the resolution. Thank you. President Matt?
Thank you, Chair Mattson. I'll entertain a motion to return to the legislative session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So you've heard the amendment to Resolution 12 of 2022. Are there any additional questions or comments?
The only additional comment, I am, I know that we are moving forward with this. I'm glad that we were able to come to some agreement that this will just be solely for this purpose through the end of the year. I think, as it wants to be for anyone else, I implore the city to continue their search for an engineer as a staff employee and management employee for the city. We've had those discussions already regarding what the cost would be to have a full-time engineer. We've lost a key asset, but that is something that I think that as a city that has a lot of projects and will have a lot of money coming through it over the next four to five years, it's going to be incumbent upon us to have someone on staff, full-time, to be able to handle the work, work with our project managers, and work with any potential contractor that we have to put additional work that may be coming to the city. But having someone internally that can address the needs of our community, be here on a day-to-day basis moving forward is going to be something that is key. We've had one ever since I've been a councilman. Prior to that, I mean, we can go back, you know, several, you know, 20, 30 years where we've had someone on staff to be able to do this work. And I don't know what, you know, I understand this short-term need right now, but we need you all to continue to work, to fill those positions. I have heard of individuals that have applied, so just making sure that they get interviews, and if we need to continue with searching, we do that, but we do it as open and transparent as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just to echo the sentiments of my fellow council personnel, it's imperative that when the training takes place, as you stated, once we do find someone and designate them to be our engineer, that we'll be training. And it's just concerning because Dowdwood's not really, I'd say, familiar with the area as it is. So to kind of train a new engineer on an unfamiliar space, you can see how that can come across a bit short with the residents, but I definitely appreciate you guys coming back time to time and putting it into perspective on how we can look. Mr. Hartman, would you be able to address Councilwoman Rawls' concern about how we would be advertising for an engineer at all? Or will we continue to look for an engineer? Or is there something that this area can address?
You would need to suspend the rules again to go out of legislative session in order to entertain that request.
I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for further discussion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Yeah, we can at any moment open that back up. I mean, obviously, we'll look a little weird as we stated during the budget hearings. When you look at the budget book, it has that amount, but if we create an amount that we have in the posting, a range, we can post it at any time through that hiring process. Come back to you with a reallocation and move about it that way. That would be the way we do it. Our problem is with it, they need to be a particular type of engineer. So the stormwater engineer might not be as relevant for us in this role because a lot of the network is now capital region water. So we have to be very particular with the PEs that we're getting, that they fit the right mold of the type of PE. But we can post it at any moment.
Absolutely. I think the question was driven towards will we be proactively continuing to look instead of kind of opening that?
If council would like, we can right now, tomorrow, post it. I mean, we would gladly do that and work through.
It hasn't been posted.
It's not posted as it stands right now.
I was of the impression that we were currently looking.
And that you were.
We were looking. We did receive one applicant, but they did not fit the, they were a stormwater engineer.
I would love to encourage to continue, just to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, to continue the search because there is a lot of great talent right here in our backyard. I'd love to help in any way, and I'm sure council would. But I think we can continue the search even if we proceed. This way, you know, if it takes time to train or anything that comes up logistically, we will be prepared for that.
We'll work with Joni tomorrow on how to post it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Hartman.
I do have a comment or a best of question. I guess both, right? So just comment-wise, I have spoken with several local engineers, some who are on some boards and commissions within the city now. And everyone's pretty much in agreement that the City of Harrisburg, a city that decides which visiting projects, needs to have an engineer on staff, having a backup company there that if there are projects that need to be scoped out, so we can have that, which is what Bill 6 originally was. I think that is a great idea. But not having a city engineer on staff, I think, is a disservice to the city and the citizens of the city. Just kind of tracking back to our budget hearings and kind of the back and forth comments we were kind of hearing from the administration. It seems that one second, we're looking for an engineer, the next second, we're not looking for an engineer. We're searching for an engineer, but we're not budgeting for an engineer. But what it really came down to was we pulled the posting, we're not really looking for an engineer. But if you want us to look for an engineer, we can post it and look for an engineer. And if we're half-heartedly looking, we're not going to find who you want. And that's kind of what it comes down to. So at a certain point, it does come off as lip service. When it's like, one side, you're saying we're looking for an engineer, but your actions say we're not even posting for an engineer. So it kind of seems like when it comes up, it's like, we're definitely looking, we're in the process, this is what the process will be. But then, once the meeting's over, it's not really anything being done to get an actual engineer in place. As far as creating a salary range, I think that's something that should have been done. When the main thing that was said during the budget hearing was that, what is it, $98,000, I believe is what it's posted for, or not posted, what it's, what the salary was, that that's not going to get us a quality engineer. I proposed $150,000 since that's what we would be paying an engineering firm. And I believe the mayor said that they weren't looking to do that at the moment to put that in the budget, just for budgeting purposes. So it kind of seems like we're going back and forth, but that the real look is to go with an engineering firm. I believe the mayor said very specifically she's looking to try it out for at least a year, going with an engineering firm. But we all know that if you try it out and wait until December 31st to start looking or even posting for an engineer, come 2023, you're not going to have an engineer ready to go. You're talking six months until the next fiscal year before you even start searching for an engineer. And then we're two years into not having an engineer and using a firm and spending money at a pretty high hourly rate in order to get our engineering services done. I do have confidence in our engineering and the traffic department, but they're not engineers. And if we could just do it without an engineer, then I don't think we'd have paid an engineer all these years, or that any city would even pay an engineer if it was just as easy as getting a stamp on some pages and someone else can do most of the exact work. And that's kind of what it seems like we're looking at doing, that our engineering department or our traffic and engineering department's going to set the paperwork up, and then we're going to pass it off to Dowdwood to take a look over and approve it. And that just doesn't seem like it's the proper way for things to be done. And maybe I'm looking at things wrong, but I'm just looking at it from, I guess, a citizen's point of view. That's the only comment I have. I don't know if it was a question.
That's been heard.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, Councilwoman Rawls?
I just, I know that, Mr. Hartman, you said you all would post it. I just ask you, keep it up. You know, don't take it down because like President, Vice, excuse me, Vice President Green said, if we wait too long, we will not end up finding one in the time that we need one before the contract winds out and then we're renewing a contract when we could have had a city engineer. So I just hope that when we do post it, I hope tonight, tomorrow, I would say, I won't say tonight, but I hope at least by tomorrow that it's a continue, it stays up posted until we find a city engineer. Is that possible for that to be done?
I will talk with Joni this evening, and she'll have it up tomorrow.
Okay, and right now, the panel, there's $98,000, correct?
Well, it's not listed on there currently. We could list it on the range of what we would want. Say, we could do like 120 to 150. As you said, 150 was kind of the high, the high end will be put there to guarantee get it, but we could go as low as 120, so we could do a range around that.
Okay, yes, that's, thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to return to the legislative session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so we've had a great discussion on the resolution, the amendment, and some possible next steps. So at this time, we will call the vote on the amendment for Resolution 12 of 2022.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
We will now vote on Resolution 12 of 2022 as amended.
Ms. Daniels?
Before you, excuse me, sorry. As the amendment changed the caption for Resolution 12, Mr. Patrowski should read the new caption.
Read me, I'm sorry. Thank you. You please read, reread, read the new caption for Resolution 12 of 2022.
Yes, Resolution 12 of 2022 as amended is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Dowdwood Engineering Incorporated for that firm to provide services as the city engineer.
Thank you. We cannot proceed with the vote.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 12 as amended passes.
Thank you. Resolution 13 of 2022?
Resolution 13 of 22 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a land donor guarantee agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, allowing the Apple Area Green Belt Association to stall conservation practices, best management practices on the city's property for the purpose of improving water quality in Spring Creek.
Thank you. Resolution 13 of 2022 will be placed in the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee. Can you please read Resolution 14 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 14 of 2022 is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development lot consolidation plan to rehabilitate an existing building into a 22-unit multifamily dwelling and construct a parking lot with 20 off-street parking spaces.
Thank you. Resolution 14 of 2022 will be placed in the Community and Economic Development Committee. Can you please read Resolution 15 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 15 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Haokian Interpreting Services LLC to provide sign language interpreting services.
Thank you. Resolution 15 of 2022 will be placed in the Administration Committee. Can you please read Resolution 16 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 16 of 2022 is a resolution approving the disposition of surplus equipment and Resolution 16 of 2022 is a resolution approving the disposition of surplus equipment and vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for the city, operations by the bureaus of fire and police.
Thank you. Resolution 16 of 2022 will be placed in the Public Safety Committee. Can you please read Resolution 17 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 17 of 22 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C2P2, Community Recreation and Conservation Planning Subprogram for up to $100,000 to help fund a Harrisburg City Parks Master Plan.
Thank you. Resolution 17 of 2022 will be placed in the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Can you please read Resolution 18 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 18 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C2P2 Rivers Conservation Subprogram for up to $1 million for funds to restore and to rehabilitate the stream bed of Spring Creek.
Thank you. Resolution 18 of 2022 will be placed in the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Can you please read Resolution 19 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 19 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C2P2, Park Rehabilitation and Development, uh, Subprogram for up to $250,000 for the purpose of raising more funds to develop Phase 2 of the Shuts and Ladders Playground in Reservoir Park.
Thank you. Resolution 19 of 2022 will be placed in the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Is there any old business, council members? Hearing none, we will move to new business. Councilwoman Rawls?
Yes, um, I'm excited to announce that the Parks and Recreation Department is now opened up their application, um, for summer counselors as well as lifeguards. So please, um, parents, get your kids to fill out the application so they can be a camp counselor this summer or a lifeguard. Um, there are incentives for signing up. If you complete the application by May 2nd, you get $100 incentive, which is allowed to a high school kid, even a college kid. Um, for lifeguards, the city, which is not many cities do this, will pay for lifeguard certification as well as give $100 incentive for, um, completing the lifeguard certification. So please get on to the Parks and Recreation Department, um, they're on Facebook, Harrisburg Parks and Recreation, um, where you can get a link, um, I believe, to the application, or you can do the application in person, or you can definitely call the city for more information, but there is a posting there for you to look at, so I advise everyone, um, if you can, please sign up or get your kids to. It's going to be an exciting summer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. Councilman Majors?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just a couple of notes. Uh, while we're still dealing with, uh, this global pandemic, COVID-19, I know that the county had recently suspended their applications for rental assistance, but just wanted the, the public to note that rental assistance and homeowner's assistance is still available, uh, through, uh, the Commonwealth. So for assistance for renters, rental assistance with any monthly bills due to the pandemic, uh, you can visit DHS.PA.gov backslash ERAP, which is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Uh, so there are still funds available through that program, and for homeowners, there is a homeowner's assistance fund. Uh, these funds can be used to help with, you know, mortgage, utilities, uh, et cetera. And there are requirements that you can find on both of the webpages, and the page for homeowner's assistance is PAHAF.org. Additionally, um, you know, as we're coming out of the winter months, um, the Capital Regional Water has a customer assistance program for folks that are experiencing financial hardship. Um, you know, we do not want our, our residents to be impacted, uh, and there are, there's assistance available through the customer assistance program through Capital Regional Water. So visit their webpage and fill out their forms. There are income requirements with individuals that are in need of assistance and apply that way. So just want to make sure our residents are aware that there is assistance out there. Um, and just lastly, uh, a note that, you know, we recently, uh, received where parents of the Harrisburg School District that, uh, Rollin Academy is going to be looking to cut, you know, down their, their hours, um, due to our teachers shortage. So, uh, if there are residents or, you know, if anyone that can provide assistance to our, our school district so that our students at the Rollin Academy can get the education that they need, please reach out to the Harrisburg School District. Uh, you know, we are experiencing a lot of fighting laws due to COVID, and this could be another step in that progression. So any residents or anyone that is, um, you know, watching us online that could provide some assistance through being a teacher or even a, a aide in the classroom, please reach out to Harrisburg School District. Um, we don't want to see our kids, um, struggle anymore due to the pandemic. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. I just have one. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, I just, uh, read, um, I received a message that, um, the door, the outside door, they're having a problem with it, and it just might be lost. I think there's a facilities person here. Please check on it because there were residents out there.
Oh, it's, I think that was an old message. It should be good to go. Should be good.
That's okay. Thank you for that. I just wanted to wish everyone a happy International Women's Day. Today's Women's Day. So happy International Women's Day, all the women. We would also like to thank Capital Region Literacy Council for their recent donation of books to our Kids Corner. And finally, I wanted to make everyone aware of a scholarship offered by the Pennsylvania Municipal League and the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners. It's the 2022 John A. Garner Civic Engagement Scholarship. There's an essay, uh, that's required civics and you. Participants are required to reflect on the theme by writing about opportunities in their community that allow for civic engagement and encourage citizens to volunteer to help with local challenges. The length, it should be three typed written double-spaced pages. School guidance counselors, uh, can select an applicant, but applicants must be high school seniors who are residents of the Commonwealth. So it's pretty open. Preference will be given to applicants attending high schools that are located in or service a league or PSAT, uh, member municipality. The essay and application must be submitted by email and received no later than Friday, June 3rd, 2022. So the information, um, I'll share with, uh, the city clerk, and we'll have it available if anyone is interested in applying. Is there any other new business, council members? Seeing and hearing none, the time is 6:58 PM. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.